Ready to go, man? Can you do it without a monitor? All right, good morning. Everybody hear us over the microphones all right? Oh, all right, good deal. I would declare a quorum and call the meeting to order. I'm sorry we're running a few minutes late and I'll explain in a second. And Bob Contreras is going to do our prayer for us.
Okay, well, would you all bow with me, please? More than thank you for a beautiful day and for cool weather. We pray through wisdom and guidance on our leaders here today who are going to make decisions in effect of the citizens of Brown County. We pray in order to give them wisdom and their good missions. And we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Bob, you can stay standing. Our next item number two, uh, three is recognition of special guest. We have a young man out here that's got a fantastic scholarship. Uh, I'm going to let Bob introduce him. And, uh, while we're running behind his printer, for some reason, it won't print his, uh, his letter that I was going to give you this morning. So I'm going to give it to you at another date, but I want Bob to introduce you and, and tell everybody what outstanding, uh, recognition you have.
Hunter Day, great Mr. Day. Please rise. His actual name, first name is Brandon. So, Greg?
Yes.
So, so you've got first place, or you got the Houston Livestock Show Scholarship Award, which is a $20,000 award. Great job.
Thank you, and I had a nice letter for you, I promise. Get it ready and get it to you. All right, thank you, Bob. All right, we're gonna, uh, I don't have anyone signed up for item number four, so I'm going to skip all down. Uh, we've got some time constraints, so I'm going to go down to item eight. He is an Edward. And Bart, why don't you come on up? I know your time is, uh, limited as well. And let me introduce you, Bart. Uh, with Peter Johnson, this is consideration of possible approval of action regarding insurance for county authorities.
Thank you, Judge, glad to see you back.
Thank you, sir. Full of vigor, fine.
So I previously was here a few months ago, kind of prepping you guys on the claims. This is an overview, uh, for you guys to kind of think about and, uh, look at. So we looked back at our claim experience, we talked about this, it's 104% above our premiums, and we call that a 104% loss ratio. So we know our claims are not good. We know that. We knew that mid-year, we knew it two months ago when we looked at, uh... So, that being said, I'll skip down to tell you that the pool average rate increase for all 200-plus counties attached was 0.73 and A1 average. Now, that doesn't mean everyone ever got seven or eight. If someone has really good claim experience, they might have got a five or a four. But those that had really bad claim experience, like us, uh, we got a 10.7. So we actually have many claims. Jen and I were talking to Jenna, uh, in our office in regards to the claims. Bart, for the Brown County officials here, and we've had a number of claims, uh, recently that's brought up and working good. So, um, I'd like to say it's getting better, but right now it's not. So we're sitting here with 18 claims over 50,000. We have five of those over 100,000. We have three of those over 200,000 claims of the board. And if any of you guys have had those large-time claims, you know that you get these bills from hospitals, I mean, you've recently been there, and, uh, there's lots of bills from lots of doctors, hospitals calling and billing offices. That's a lot of what we do, but with that type of claim experience, a 10.7% increase, really, I know it sounds good, but it is not. I mean, in another world, a commercial world, you'd have been non-renewed or have been 40% anywhere else.
It was just a few years ago that they were only 20% for no reason at all.
Well, you gotta think about the cost of drugs, too. So the cost of prescription drugs are highly outpacing medical trend inflation. So, uh, just a Humira, a Humira drug used for chronic disease authorized for many different ailments. It's an eighty to a hundred thousand dollar a year, uh, one-for-one drug. There's a lunch month exception, it's a hundred thousand dollars a year. And so, and we have, that is happening in our county. So we know that's the fact. Now, the good news is, we are going to, the TAC is going to issue a four-minute $3 distribution. That'll be split up based on your tenure with TAC. We know we've been there a long time, uh, but also has to do with claim experience. Last year, we received 33,000. We do not know what we're going to receive yet this year. We'll know in July. Uh, I would hope to receive something like that, which would, you know, be nice to get that. That's actually a check written back to the county. We will get, we will get a surplus due to, just, we don't have a figure yet. The TAC pool hasn't voted on that yet. Uh, TAC does pay all the Obamacare fees and taxes, that's included. See enough for about that. In this packet, basically what I've included, and you've seen this before, is a claim experience, which will turn in the very last page. We will see the plan options for this year. And so you have this opportunity, if you wanted to, to change your plan deductible in out-of-house to a higher deductible, higher out-of-house, if you want. The difference in that, basically, on that two, that second plan is about a 2.2% savings for the thousand deductible. 1,500 is about 5.9 or 6% savings.
Go ahead.
On the 10%. Stay as you are.
And it could possibly come back down next year.
It could.
The savings for option one and two really aren't very much, but...
They're not.
But it really changes a lot of the co-pay.
That, as I said, I remember just a few years ago when I was at Howard County, we jumped 30% one year.
Yep. That is not uncommon, all the way. We've got the hard dealership, uh, we're for the year, it's got a 70% increase, so, uh, it's, it's just part of the land. So basically, I mean, my, my opinion, uh, the savings that you see on raising these deductibles may not be worth it. It's not that much savings.
I mean, my opinion, the, the savings that you would get don't. It would actually hit the pocketbook of the employees a lot more than we're going to save.
No, it would.
I don't, this, this particular year, I don't, I'm not seeing a reason. My personal opinion, I wouldn't change.
In anticipation of this, I don't have any hard figures to give you, but I asked Bob to meet with the appraisal district. And, uh, even if we, uh, hold the tax rate as it is, we're looking at a sizable, uh, addition of what we had last year, so we might...
We've got, we've got a lot of new property.
It's new businesses and new homes that were built, being added to the tax rule. So I, I think we're okay, uh, but, of course, they can't quote us anything this early, but it looks like we're going to be all right if we hold what we have.
That's my recommendation.
Bart, when was, uh, when did we change the deductibles? Was it last year or the year before?
Last year.
Last year, and we went from...
500.
500 to 750, right? So...
There was a bigger difference there for us last year.
Yes, it was.
And there isn't this year, primarily because the pool, there's a hole that's not running that well.
Well, in view of that, I move that we choose, uh, option 1100 NG, RX 5B NG, which does not change the deductibles from, uh, what they were this past year.
Right. Well, we're ready to do, I'd second that if you're ready to do that.
All right, I have a motion, second. Commissioner Kelton, any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
All right, I'll, we'll get with Ann and...
Next year, you go bring it.
When do we, who needs to sign this? Bart, can you do it, or...
Just we'll do it.
Before Wednesday, is that correct?
We need it done before Wednesday. In fact, today would be better, this afternoon, if you're around.
Yeah, no, I'll be here all weekend.
Okay. I'll get Janet for me.
I'll be in meeting from about, uh, 2:00 on, so you can get it to me before then.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bart.
Thank you, Bart.
With that, Judge, I'll need you to excuse myself.
Yes, sir.
You gotta go.
Yes.
Gotta go.
Brown State.
About three hours.
I'll say. Uh, is anybody here from, uh, Judge Smith's office?
Me.
Oh, you're handling, okay. Do you want to do that next, or since you're going to be here for the little meeting, can I come back?
It doesn't matter if you're here or not.
We didn't have any of the forwards, right? Settlements coming.
No.
And we don't have any five today?
We don't. Chief, you want to come on up and get yours out of the way?
Absolutely.
Item number eight, senior, the sheriff's office, the chief deputy is here, in consideration of possible approval of action regarding accepting donations.
Morning.
Morning, how are you?
I'm good.
Got a couple of donations, one of, uh, one of the citizens, one of the remaining officers, it's a hundred dollar check, and then bless his body shop, don't even, seventy dollars on some, oh, we do some, hey, Lord. For, for, to be able to pay it half, which is more than what we do. We made a donation to this, for doing some...
What's that going to go toward, anything in particular?
It just goes in the sheriff's office donations.
I make a, I make a motion to accept those donations for the sheriff's department.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Kelton, the second from Commissioner Traywick. Any further discussion? All in favor? Accept the donations as unanimous?
Also, I feel as jail, jail population are more important to us. It's like we have 154 total inmates in Brown County, Mr. Morgan. We have one house over in Comanche County. We have four out of county's house here. Got a bill where...
Tell me our capping, I always forget.
150, or 196 is the cap, yeah, 154, so...
I got a call from Sheriff Deeds in Hood County, and I referred it to y'all.
Yeah, I spoke with the chief deputy Smith over there, but they contract, they were working with them. They were bad, 209 on the 126 bed, and they had a two-county school.
I've known Chief Smith for three decades, he's a good guy. I told him I didn't know if we had room to help him out or not, but I sent him the office.
Little bit of room right now, so...
We'll take the venue.
Where we can get it.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
No, there's no...
There's no item.
There's no what?
There's no item six either, no treasury folders.
And there's no item five, right?
Correct.
Well, that makes it a lot easier, doesn't it? Uh, is anyone here from the DA's office? Are you doing that one also?
I'm doing the DA.
I'm doing the...
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Personnel changes.
Call after we...
The DA.
You are, you're calling?
I'm just not calling.
Right, meanwhile, we'll go to item number G. Stephanie is here, but, uh, consider, uh, eight G is endorsed, consideration of possible approval of action regarding signing of interlocal agreement between West Central Texas Council Governments, Region Nine, uh, 1-1 programs in Brown County. If someone would like to make a motion, give me permission to sign that.
Those being changed, I mean, she's, that's our, that's where our 911 tax money is just for everything.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I said, I can't, it's hyphenated, yes.
I had to look at that twice. I guess I'd make a motion. We authorize the judge to sign the interlocal agreement between West Texas, West Central Texas, council governments, Region Nine, and Brown County.
To get that. We have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? All right. I don't, I want to say Mr. Tejens, we'll tell the last, because that's going to take a little bit more time. So why don't we go ahead and knock out eight B, Max Smith, if you don't mind? Uh, let me introduce the consideration of possible approval of action regarding purchasing of new stenograph machine.
Uh, yes, sir. They have the one and only quote available to them of $5,045 for this new machine that they are in need of, and because it's over the thousand-dollar limit, they just need approval from the board.
They have it in their budget, though?
Yes.
They're going to pay that, they have a budget, they're on some kind of fund they have for that.
Yeah, yeah, they have their own funds.
So, we furnish the, I thought that was, okay. The court reporter's going to furnish their own?
No, not, not that I'm aware of.
I thought they did. I learned more.
I do.
I don't know. I, to be perfectly honest, I don't know what a stenograph is, so...
They'll send the court reporter the types on, and it's... I know they're not cheap.
No.
And I didn't know that we paid for it.
Uh...
And if we do, that's great, I just didn't know that.
We pay plenty, in my opinion, always, for the services, and then you actually pay them to do the job, and then you can never frankly furnish a equipment, too, I presume.
I don't know. I've never, I've never, since I've been here, I've never known if I would, but...
But they last forever, too, so, I, you know, I don't...
Is there a price or an invoice, or...
Yeah, it's $5,045.
They're going to pay for it over their own fund.
He has his own budget, that's, it's his, how he spends his money is up to him.
Yeah, I'd be able to just like a supply, I like an honest supply.
If he, if, if found out that we don't provide that, then he could get with his court reporter and make it work out how she can reimburse the payment. That's my opinion. With, with that understanding, I'll make a motion to approve it. As long as it comes out of his budget and he verifies that if the county does, uh, doesn't pay for it, that he, he and her will work out to reimburse the plan. Otherwise, if we do pay for it, then, as long as it comes out of his budget.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Larry, second.
All in favor? Carries unanimous. What'd you find out?
Well, Michael's not in yet, but I'll go ahead and...
Okay, let me read it to the record then. Item number eight D is in David, is, uh, Michael Murray, the district attorney's requested consideration of possible approval of action regarding, uh, employee changes. And, uh, our county attorney, Shane Ripley, will represent.
Stephanie Barnes, who is the, if you pour your mind... Stephanie Barnes, who is the victim witness coordinator, uh, left and went to the advocacy center, and she'll be replaced by Kirsten Staten, uh, who, who had the job before Stephanie, um, and got married and moved off, and now she's back, and so she'll be replaced, and she apparently has already started, because she entered the phone, I called up there. And so she, she wanted to know what I was doing, and I said, "Well, I'm trying to get your job." And so she'll be, she'll be starting at the same salary as the previous employee.
Starting at the same salary as the previous employee? We don't have a starting position, pay for that position?
Excuse me?
We don't have a starting pay for that position?
I'm assuming not, since it's a unique position.
I can hardly hear you.
I'm assuming not, since it's a unique position, I'm assuming it just...
So what is the starting salary?
Well, Michael has one of those.
He has one, yeah, he has one of those, but he's been having a whole... I think this is one of, this is what Stephanie brought something to me.
I apologize, with the AC on, it makes it kind of hard to hear.
I hear somebody was whispering out.
Yes.
We're on your item right now.
Yes, I'm so sorry.
This is Kirsten Staten.
Kirsten Staten, who had substituted Stephanie, brought in, and my, my, it's more than me that...
Yes, please.
I'd be happy to hear the salary, man.
Joel, you heard that...
Thirty thousand, two thirty-nine, twenty-five.
You heard that Kirsten was in that position, and she left, and Stephanie took over, now Kirsten.
Still, how much money we're talking about, so just now? Thirty thousand...
Two thirty-nine, thirty-nine dollars, yeah, and twenty-five cents.
All right, I feel better.
Where's this going, I don't know.
You.
Or, or do I...
The commissioners have to sign, and y'all both have to sign.
Okay, well, uh, one is gone, so we'll start with two.
Well, after we approve.
After we approve, yes. So, uh, the starting salary's been read into the record, and I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Shaw made a motion to, uh, approve the personnel changes in the district attorney's office. Commissioner Traywick seconded. It's kind of hard with AC on, like you said.
Yeah, I can hardly hear you myself right here.
So, uh, any further discussion? Uh, no further discussion, all in favor? Carries unanimous?
Thank you. Sorry for being late.
It's all right, uh...
There you go. Back to your what?
I don't think that the place on the... See Judge, and, 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 or just initially. Jennifer, you also have item number, uh, eight H is in Henry, consideration of possible approval of action regarding, is it arbitrage?
Uh, arbitration, uh...
Oh, arbitrage.
Agreement, yeah, it's, what they, it's the agreement for arbitrage rebate compliance services between Brown County, Texas, and Hilltop Securities Asset Management. It's the full title.
Is this, any changes in the agreement from that?
Um, well, they've gone up a little bit, per the usual. Um, it's 1,400 for the year, plus the 750 for, um, our IRS, it says IRS refund request, update calculation, prepare refund request package, and assist issuer as necessary in responding to subsequent IRS information requests. So a total of 2,150, which has been budgeted for in the debt service.
So again, that is for what?
That is where they help us with our tax notes and all that stuff that we did in the fall.
Okay.
That's part of their fee for that.
I'll let, entertain a motion.
Who's going to sign that?
The judge.
Judge signs that. I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, the contract with Hilltop Securities.
Second. Commissioner Shaw seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor? Give me a second. While we're doing this, I'm knocking these out so we can get to Mr. Tejens. Uh, item number eight A is, uh, Commissioner Kel, Joel Kelton, consideration of possible action regarding the burn bin.
We're still okay for the moment. We may get a chance to rain this week, so they say.
So, it's one of us calls murder.
Yeah, I'll call it. I got a chance to rain. Not calling any names. There is a weatherman in our audience. So I say no action.
Darrell, you have anything to add?
No, sir. We had very few fires, and then, um, also, mechanical issues, so...
We had a dumpster fire last night, and we hired it in the morning. Good Northlake woke me up, I mean, I used to get...
So, uh, no action on item number eight A, I'm...
I suspect foul play.
I suspect he hates boys.
Fireworks or something. Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted you guys.
No, I, I just said no action on item number...
I suggest no action on item A.
Uh, okay, uh... We've got item number nine, I always save for last, we've got to pay the bills coming up, uh, so I guess we can go to item number eight. Effes and Frank, which is a citizen, uh, Raymond Jenkins, I spoke to Commissioner Traywick, and he agreed to sponsor this item, so we left it on the agenda. Consideration of possible approval of action regarding approval of an onsite wastewater sewage facility per, uh, per an aerobic system, and I, uh, I did, I do also have our current policy, if somebody needs to, y'all probably already know it, y'all deal with it every day, so...
I'm just saying, everything is up there, for free, but I was, I was curious, Rita's here also, so I want to hear what she has to say about it, too.
We'll allow you to make your proposals, sir.
Well, first of all, thank you for taking the time to see. Uh, I do, I recognize, Kevin, right?
Yes, sir.
So onsite sewage facility is recommended, or, or, from what I'm understanding, is forced on the lake residents, uh, out of the lake for EPA reasons. And with that, uh, comes a, um, you know, good chunk of change to get that done. The first two years of the contract is covered by who installs that system. And the state of Texas only requires the, uh, the, the contract with the maintenance provider for the first two years. In, uh, 2013, this commission met, uh, to, uh, an application in the change in that order in Code 366.031, uh, where there was an amendment made that in Section 10, uh, Part D, uh, homeowners with an onsite sewage facility require periodic maintenance, must contract with a TCEQ license provider. And with that, that contract requires, uh, everybody with an onsite sewage facility to pay $300 a year, uh, for a outside agency to come and look at the system to see if it's working correctly. There's no reports given, there's no time, uh, I have no record of anybody ever coming to see me. They don't even put the chlorine in the, uh, in the system. So my first deal is, is what am I paying for? I don't have a contract with a plumber or an electrician when something happens in my house, that a plumber comes out and has to fix it. Nor does this contract warrant me any discount towards a fee or anything that needs to happen to that system. Uh, a year and a half ago, I've only had this system five years, six years now. Year and a half ago, my aerator went out. That aerator cost me $300. So if we were having maintenance done, how does an aerator go out in three and a half years? So what maintenance is being done? And I'm not seeing the maintenance, I'm not seeing the reports. I can understand the, the idea behind it with this commission and wanting to take care of the EPA regulations and everything that happens, and, uh, and maybe in 2013, uh, there might have been concerns with onsite sewage facilities and what, what it would do to the lake and surrounding areas, and maybe that was the concern of the commission. But we haven't had any incidents, not to speak of, not any worse than a, than a normal septic that would erupt or get maybe into the water by a lakefront property? And who's to say what's happening with the thousands of visitors we have over the summer? They tend to use Lake Brownwood as their restroom. That happens. So I don't understand, you know, as a homeowner, why I got to pay this $300 a year, when it's not doing me any good. All it's doing is, is the four or five guys that are licensed in the community, in Brown County, off the over 400 aerobic systems that are in the county, are making $300 a year off of it. That's $120,000 dispersed upon three or four people. There's no records, there's no checks and balances in the system. We don't know if they're reporting, I don't get a receipt. I mean, even when I, when, you know, when I was back in the oil field, running, running oil, I had a receipt when they came and picked up my oil, either accept or reject. And I got a report as to what I needed to do. There's no checks and balances in this, and I would like this commission to, uh, take a look at Amendment D and, and, uh, follow more of the guidelines of the state of Texas in allowing, uh, the homeowner the right to require, do the periodic maintenance required, uh, to an onsite sewage facility, just like I would if I had a plumbing issue, or if I had an electric issue, roofing issue. Should be along those same guidelines. That's what I have.
All right, give us a minute to hear from Steph.
Okay.
Terry, I'm sorry, I overlooked you sitting out there.
That's okay.
Has, has a case been filed? Do you want to come up and tell us what the status is?
I certainly can.
Is it okay with you?
We went through this, you know, the area of...
Tell us what the, I think the case is due.
Good morning.
Good morning. So a ticket was issued, and a citation was issued, um, for Mr. Jenkins, uh, because he didn't have a contract with, uh, Vermont. And of course, as you know, the county can have more stringent regulations than the state. Can have less stringent, you can have more stringent requirements than, than the state does. And so, uh, when he came to court on, let's say it was April 6th, or thereabouts, um, we had a discussion, and my recollection is that, uh, I essentially gave him three options, that either he could get a contract, uh, he could become licensed himself in order to maintain it, or that he could, as his, as he's done today, uh, appeal to here and ask for a change. I completely understand the, you know, the workings behind all of this. I would assume, and of course, I don't know, I've never had a contract with any of these folks, but I would assume that he has to... but I would assume that he has to, uh, contract individually. And I would think that he would be able to contract and ask for a report, uh, if, uh, they, you know, if they generate one. And, um, so I don't know exactly what else to tell you, but, uh, I mean, the idea behind resetting it to begin with was, uh, just like we do with most people, to try to give them an opportunity to come into compliance. And so that was the three-month period of time where he could have contracted. If he had contracted, we could dismiss the case under JP rule. Um, so, I can answer your questions, but it's just really kind of that simple.
As I recall, with Rita, didn't we ask the people of TCEQ to review our rules and, and, and what was there? Do you recall what they said after they reviewed our policy, our rules on that?
That our rules shouldn't stand, just like our.
Can you come up?
Hate to put you on the spot, but I can't hear you. I mean, but this has been addressed to some degree, we talked about this. I know we, we had, I remember asking about that, and you, and I know she came and y'all visited about our rules and our regulations.
Yeah, we have had approval from TCEQ on our regulations and changes that we made. And they give us the authority to enforce our regulations.
Does that include any, any of our regulations that are more stringent than what they require?
Yes, they have to review before we can.
And do you get, uh, I just, I just heard a complaint from a homeowner, said he doesn't get a report. I'm assuming you get something.
I get reports, yes, and they can report us wrong, they're making it provided that they get a report every time they come in.
If they don't, I'm assuming that you'd be happy to give them a copy of that.
I have digital copies of all of them.
Professor, Professor. The contract inspected hits, Dave?
I'm sorry.
Has it, has it still?
Well, up until the time was contracting, it's by their heads.
Object expired.
Yes. And it.
Which is why we're silent.
Right. And so far is saying that it's required to have an aerobic system at the lake, it's not. The requirement is depending on what type of soil you have, what type of system you can put in. It's not a requirement that you can live at the lake and have.
And I assume that a system was there when you bought the house?
Uh, yes, sir. Oh, when I, when I purchased the house, the county, uh, or I guess somebody decided that, uh, my, my aerobics, or my septic system was, uh, not any good. And my understanding through purchase of the house, that the county, uh, I, my understanding was they, they, we were told that we had to have an aerobic system because of our, uh, soil or whatever the case, that we were forced to.
You talking about the previous owner, I guess?
Yes, and I wasn't in the negotiations, uh, with that, it was on the other side. And so the negotiations that I had was paying half, uh, to, in order for the homeowner to go through and need a, everything to be up to standard was, is that I paid half of the, of the cost, uh, to have that septic system, uh, repaired. And half of it ended up being, uh, you know, eight thousand dollars, uh, for an aerobic system. That I had, I, and I didn't have a say in what kind of system was put in.
And I say, I recall that we had TCEQ stop by and review our rules, make sure that we were not out of line on other than all. And that answer was we were, we were good.
I like that.
So, so that was actually, because I remember just getting brought up.
What is the fine amount for a violation of something like this?
You know, I gotta tell you, I don't remember. I have a little chart that I look at, because this doesn't come up for real.
Right, right, and I know it's not the same, is it?
Under five hundred?
Is it, is it under five hundred?
Uh, five hundred.
Oh, to five, okay, so class six.
Class six.
Well, thank you. Your precinct, sir.
Yes. We've got the rules, they've been here for a long time and they're there for a reason.
And we did, we did have pollution issues at the lake. I wasn't on the court then, but I followed it. And they were trying to curtail.
I, I understand, and I'd like to interject one last thing, that this commission announced on July, it was July eleventh of twenty thirteen, that, that there was gonna be a public meeting held, uh, for this, uh, for this agenda to go before the TCEQ. Uh, and four days later, the public meeting was held. There was not even time enough to allow a public meeting to come together. And on, on, then on the seventeenth, it was signed in an order.
Well, by law, it only has to be seventy-two hours.
I understand, sir, I'm just saying that this is.
I, I feel you, I do.
And, and I, and I will, and I forgot what you.
Raymond Jenkins.
Amendment. I've never met Raymond, but that's obviously an issue that would come to deal with people, make a lot of complaints. And I, and I'll be completely honest with you, I agree a hundred percent with everything he said. I, I've never understood the rule, I, I've disagreed with it from day one, I did not, I was not involved in creating that rule. We researched ways around that rule, we researched other counties on how they implement that rule. And, uh, and I think that it's time that we re, we, we need to reexamine that rule. Uh, I, I don't think that today is, is an appropriate time to just say, well, I'm gonna have that rule. But I think that it may be time that we need to, uh, reexamine that and have a public hearing and allow people to come in here and voice their.
You and I spoke about this, and that's the reason I asked for the TCEQ to review it, but that's.
Because it, it comes up more in your precinct than anywhere.
Could, could you put a stay on his criminal issue until we make a decision?
Hold on things, absolutely. And I mean, in our regulations, they can capitalize this maintenance provider if you do their own.
How, how hard is that?
Not all homeowners are diligent to do what they're supposed to do.
Right.
I mean, we realize that, so we gotta remember, they gotta remember, there are those that won't take that step to do their own thing.
What is the training requirement to be able to inspect?
They have to be an installer and they have.
But there's, but there are, majority of counties in the state of Texas don't have that rule. They have a rule that says you can take a, like a Saturday course and become a, it's, they don't require you to be a licensed installer.
Could you, could you give us thirty days or so to, uh, to get with TCEQ and, and our county attorney and see what I watch?
I, I would, I would, I, and, and I would, there's a lot of things in the, in the code that are good. There is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of checks and balances there. But I believe this one amendment is the one that's, needs to be addressed.
Do you mind hearing from TCEQ?
I don't have a problem.
We reviewed it one.
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't think we need to hear from TCEQ.
Well, we can't change anything without their permission, with all legal terms. Okay.
But, uh, I mean, we just need to schedule it for a public, this is, I mean, this is a very, very, and you know that, I mean, this is a very.
This the same case that we've been talking about for a year or something?
No, no, this, no, this is, this, this, I mean, we, we do this about four or five times a year.
Okay, I'm aware of two, really, really well.
And this is not even those two that, that we've talked about previously.
Okay.
And so, so it's one of these things, we, we keep kind of kicking the cane down the road and we just need to deal with it.
We, we're still gonna have some teeth in it or they may run and, and out across in the freshwater.
No, 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 she's still inspecting the original installation. But the whole, that's not, the original installation is not the issue. The issue is our rules require that an inspection be done annually. Well, we're not inspecting anything else, we're not inspecting.
The other systems are completely totally underground.
There's a reason.
These systems are screened on top of the ground.
Okay, okay. Out of all the septic systems, of all kinds that hit Brown County, which fail most often, the other kinds of systems.
Well, because you have maintenance on those other systems.
And, and so it's not like these are the only systems that are failing. We have failed systems of all different kinds, but this is the only kind that we inspect. We don't inspect any other systems.
Well, yeah, it's a big discussion, but you're also, but you're spraying raw, if you don't, if it's not pretty, you're spraying raw. So it's on top of your ground, it's gonna run off every night if it's not done. I mean, I see the reason, I see, I see both sides of this. There's gotta be a way, but you can't expect, we're not even supposed to speak to you, dearness, I'm sorry.
I, I know, I was.
There's two, there's two sides of this story.
There, there are, there, there's a, but, but, but what's happening is, and this is, this is just my guy. What's happening is homeowners are contracting with inspectors. Inspectors aren't even going out to their houses. We've caught them doing that.
Okay, well, I don't.
Okay, and they're, and what they're doing is he pays somebody three hundred dollars a year to file a piece of paper with her office. That's all they're doing.
Well, then that person should be prosecuted for that.
Well, I, I.
I mean, investigate.
But we're not, but we're not in a position of, of curing all the world's ills. I mean, we're just, we're just, the commissioner's court needs to implement reasonable rules for kind of a reasonable orderly way of doing business. And we're not, we can't do everything to everybody. So what we're requiring, somebody would pay three hundred dollars, and I mean, and, and, and I know positively.
If I was doing it, I'd be whining, you know me.
Yeah.
I'd be whining too.
Yeah.
I mean, he knows me, well, I'd be having. I, I, I just trying to figure, it's gotta be a, somewhere, because not everybody's gonna pay attention and take care of the system. If they get violated, they're not gonna do it.
I know new rules.
I might be.
She's gonna make us put in a road. And so we're just.
And but, but the fact that you had an aerobic system before you came, after you came, that's totally out of our deal.
It sounds like at the very minimum, we need to make some amendments that would require, uh, uh, an onsite visit, a date and time, that they meet the homeowner and that be documented and that be turned.
Or allow him to go to a Saturday course to do his inspection.
It, it, can you give us a, a little time so we can maybe have a public hearing and, and come up with some altern, altern, alternatives? Would that be all right with the court? Not change, not saying we're changing, I'm not even saying we're gonna change anything.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, but your, your criminal, the, the citation you issued, uh, the county attorney's office will put that on hold.
In, in the, in the short amount of time that I did have, I did go door to door and I, and I ended up with over fifteen signatures in a little amount of time. There's a number of residents.
Oh, sure, well, nobody wants to pay. Those all have aerobic systems, the ones you're talking about?
Yeah, no one wants to pay the money if they don't have to, if they get it, you know, but, uh.
A lot of them.
But as Commissioner Traywick said, we, we still gotta have some teeth, otherwise.
And I think the teeth should be done on the back end if somebody neglects their system. And then there's fines and lettuces for that.
Right, right.
But not for the guy that's doing the.
Right, right, but with Allen being, but if they're not actually going out and inspecting them, then that's an issue. But we have a beautiful lake for a reason, and we wanna keep it that way. That's because we're very strict on, on environmental issues and, and we wanna keep it that way. Uh, so give us, give us a little bit of time.
I really appreciate your time.
But I'll get with Shane.
No, I promise you, no, no, I understand.
Not, it may stay exactly the same, in which case we'll, we'll ask Terry to, to work with you and maybe even.
Yeah, they can get all four hundred onsite sewage people.
And I said, I see both sides of this, I just, but I don't know the.
With the court's permission, I'll get with Shane and we'll get, we'll get something set up. All right, thank you, sir.
Screened need to be involved.
Yeah, absolutely, and I didn't. So we'll take no action on item number eight F as in Frank for now.
Do you watch D?
Thank you, Terry. Uh, item number seven is, uh, pay the bills.
I actually already looked at the bills, so I'm ready.
I'm ready.
Shaw, you ready?
Pay the bills presented by the.
I'll second it. Oh, wait a minute, we got two seconds, but I beat him.
So Commissioner Traywick seconded by Commissioner Kilton. Uh, any further discussion on paying bills, all in favor? Carrie's unanimously. Uh, fellows, have I forgotten anything?
No, we'll file item.
Uh, oh, item number nine, oh, and I do have something I did forget, but item number nine is commissioners' comments. It's a chat opportunity for the commissioners to make any announcements, no action can be taken. Uh, I'd like to go out of room here to answer.
No, but back to the item we were just on, we, we went through there, like I said, we asked TCEQ to review our rules one time, make sure that we weren't out of line. And of course, ours may have been stricter, I don't know what it was, but that was, you and I talked about that, that's been, it's been a year, that's a different case, a different case.
And what they, what they did, I mean, we sent them our rules and they said, yeah, you're not out of line. And that, that, they're not saying those are a good idea, they just said, yeah, you have the authority to implement those rules. That's all TCEQ. It's not like TCEQ looked at our rules and said, oh, those are great rules. All they did was, they looked at the rules and said, yeah, you have the authority to do that.
Well, I, I guess I wouldn't want to be asked more from them, but okay. I was asking to see if we were out of line, if that was, if it was.
And I, and I, and I just looked it up.
They were reasonable and.
And I just looked it up and what Texas A&amp;M recommends.
Texas A&amp;M recommends?
But Texas A&amp;M recommends that, that home, well, I'm not, maybe even recommends that. But they have a, they have a course now that you take online, you take an online course and you get it, and you get, you get certified as a homeowner to do your own inspections.
And then you file that with.
And then you file that with Rita and then you just do your own inspection.
Was that saying Rita went out there and it hadn't been done like it was supposed to be done? Then you need to nail them.
Then you need to nail them, that's, that's all right. But we'll schedule a public hearing and let everybody.
Well, we need to decide what we wanna do before we schedule our idea, before we schedule a public hearing for us. Okay.
Uh, no, this afternoon we're meeting, is it? Uh, yes, this afternoon I'm meeting, I'm announcing, I'm meeting with the various superintendents. Uh, and we're gonna discuss, uh, uh, all of you don't let it, I'm just taking it for the record. Uh, options on how best to, or what the demands are for, uh, infrastructure and also prevent dealing that. By the way, I forgot to mention, uh, we got from the Texas Historical Commission, uh, for two thousand twenty, we have a distinguished service award that they presented to, uh, the Brown County Historical Commission. I don't know if anybody's here from the Historical Commission, but, uh, Randy, if you'd be sure.
Good job, good boy, good job, head of boys.
Uh, and I don't have anything else, Larry. Wayne? I'm not ready to get out of here. Shane?
We got a hand up out here.
Yeah.
Uh, Judge, Commissioners, I just wanted to thank you guys for the checks of your representatives from the Longyear Fire Department. I'll thank you guys for.
Did you get your radios too?
Continuing to do your, your funding for all the Longyear Fire Department throughout the county.
Well, and we're gonna look at that, that level again this year as, as our money allows us, you know, we got animal shelter and, and obviously after COVID, the health department. Did you get your radios already?
We got radios in our hands and that's wonderful. We had ours mounted in our trucks of mobile units, uh, over the, over the, well, Thursday, Friday last week. So, we're set up in Wichita and they're scheduling those throughout the county, so, uh, but I think all the purple radios, right, everybody's saying.
We did, May, what, they would do Mays, was that Thursday or Friday? That's Friday, wasn't it?
Thursday.
It was Thursday?
Thank you.
But he was, uh, I know that Daryl was out, out there Thursday.
Uh, I didn't mean Matt, you guys, I didn't mean to look over y'all, if y'all have anything to add. Uh, when do we need to meet again? Tuesday.
It's a holiday. And so we either meet on Tuesday or you wait until.
Somebody's already mentioned something, Tuesday.
She's not here, do we, do we have to meet, I'd rather wait, I don't like this.
I have a unemployment report that has to be approved the first week of July.
All right.
Tuesday, somebody already said something about Tuesday.
Okay, all right.
She just said, she just said, well, I know.
There's something we're doing Tuesday, she needs to meet Tuesday, apparently.
You know what she says?
All right, well, I'll, I'll call a meeting for, uh, nine A.
Oh, I know, we're having budget hearings Tuesday, actually.
Yeah. So Monday, uh, Tuesday morning at nine AM, I'll, I'll host a meeting unless anybody's here.
And we're having Popeyes for lunch.
Popeyes will be furnishing their food.
No, 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 we're not gonna go that far, I just hope he doesn't.
We can arrange something.
I just hope he doesn't poison my food if I go there.
All right, with that said, I'll declare us adjourned.
Matt, thank you for subbing.
Yes, sir.